Except for Councilmember Olson, who's absolutely excused. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none. Projected agenda? Seeing none. Review of public engagement opportunities. Wow, they're testing my sight. Okay, let's see. Wednesday, November 14th, Community Open House from 5:30 to 7:00 PM in Conference Rooms 107, 108 on the first floor here. The city is proposing building sidewalks and bike lanes along Northeast 188th. For students who live within one mile of Bothell High School or West Hill Elementary School, city staff will be available to answer any questions. Is that it? Okay. Next on the agenda is the special presentation. So it's a Sound Transit presentation. We have Luke Lemond, Government and Community Relations Coordinator. Paul Cornish is here to pinch-hit, I believe.
Sure.
All right, good luck. And Kathy Liotta. Hi, welcome.
Actually, I was just gonna kind of set this up for Kathy, who's the project manager for the 522 BRT portion. And I just want to start off by thanking for letting us be here. I think last time I was here, I talked about how all roads to the BRT go through Bothell, and they certainly do, and that's why we're here talking about both the 405 and the 522 tonight. I'd like to thank Councilman McNeil and Councilman Dora, who are members of the ELG, Electoral Leadership Group, as well as Jennifer, who participates in the City's Managers Group. And then we have Steve, Chief Mayor Carr, and Eddie Lowe also are in the inter-agency group. So we've got lots of, we're using a lot of your resources helping us out to get this project off the ground, and we appreciate that greatly. So I wanted to give that shout-out. And I also wanted to give the shout-out to, we're currently, we were talking to Jason and others today. We're negotiating the agreement for the Bothell Stage III project that you've designed, and we're gonna fund the construction of. I just like to bring that out, because I think that's a real nice example of the partnership that Sound Transit and Bothell have, so I like to put a plug into that whenever I can, because that'll be an exciting continuation of the cooperation with Sound Transit and Bothell. So that was my piece, but I just want to have Kathy come here, she's gonna talk about where we've been, what we've heard, where we're going, and then I'll finish up with a little bit of the 405 BRT, and kind of let you know what's going on with that as well. Thank you.
Okay, well, nice to be back again. We're gonna, I'm gonna give you an update of the community and stakeholder engagement. As you may know, we've been very busy the last couple of months on community engagement for this project. As you may recall, we had corridor-wide open houses in the May-June timeframe, and that included, actually, two open houses in Bothell. One was at the North Shore Senior Center, and we also had a smaller one at the UW-Bothell Cascadia College. And we finished out a round recently of community workshops, September and October. We had two workshops in each of these communities, so a very big push that we're just getting We've shown you this before. This is our, the graphic that shows our engagement and the collaborative processes. As you can sort of see, we're reaching the tail end of this Phase 1 of this project. So we've been very busy engaging and collaborating, and we'll continue to do so. Okay, so for summary of what we've heard through all of that engagement, these are some corridor-wide summaries. One, there's a lot of interest in fast, frequent, and reliable transit service, which is great to hear. This is what we're looking to provide. There have been questions about property impacts along the corridor, more of an issue in some parts of the corridor, more to the west than Bothell, but there are some potential property impacts in Bothell as well. A desire across the corridor for more parking, and a desire for better access, walking, biking to the BRT stations. Specifically, some of the feedback we've heard in Bothell are similar to the corridor-wide support for fast and reliable transit service. There is interest. Bothell is the one place along the two BRT lines where the two BRT lines do connect up, so there is support for easy and fast connections between the two BRT projects. One of the, we, at our workshops, we showed some different options for where the transit center could be located, at the UW-Bothell Cascadia College. And regarding the one that's along Northeast 85th, just a little bit west of the existing transit center, there was both support for and some concerns for that option. Let's see what else. As with the rest of the corridor, support for station act, walking and biking to the stations, and transit priority improvements. So I'm gonna move into the general project updates now. You've seen this graphic before, but this graphic shows the representative project that was our starting point. This is the project as it was scoped out, and the cost estimate was developed for inclusion in the ST3 ballot measure, which the voters approved two years ago, almost to the day, actually. And so this is the starting point from which we are working on refining this project. The red lines you'll see show where the representative project assumes adding business access and transit lanes, or bus queue jumps, parking in Lake Forest Park, Kenmore and Bothell, every other bus going from Bothell to Woodinville. Some key considerations corridor-wide as we start to look at refinements to that representative project, is the representative project is the starting point, and we're in the process of refining that. Again, same things that you've already heard, transit speed and reliability, impacts to traffic, and also impacts to property, and also impacts to traffic, non-motorized access, coordination with our partners, WashDOT, transit agencies, and local plans. And of course, we have cost and schedule that we need to stay within, and there are some market pressures that we need to be aware of. So this is the phase in the project where we are refining that representative project, going from a representative to refined project. We're right in the process right now of evaluating those refinements, and we'll anticipate going to the Sound Transit Board in March with a refined project to then take into environmental review and conceptual engineering. And I'll show you the schedule for that a little bit later. So what is in the representative project for Bothell? The representative includes three stations in Bothell. One is at the existing transit center at the UW-Bothell Cascadia College, so we're assuming that we're expanding the existing transit center. Another station is close to the library at about 98th Avenue and Northeast 103rd. And another, the third one representative location is just along 185th, close to City Hall, close here to City Hall. The representative project assumes parking at what's called Lot P South. That is a parcel that's currently owned by the City of Bothell, north of the library. It assumes the addition of a westbound business access and transit lane on SR522 from Northeast 180th to 96. It assumes that the BRT service travels on SR522, but then travels north along 98th Avenue, and then east along Northeast 185th to serve the colleges. And again, mentioned every other bus to Woodinville. So there have been quite a number of potential refinements to the representative project in Bothell. And at the community workshops that we had a couple of weeks ago, we showed all of them. We had them all on roll plots. We showed some high-level preliminary evaluation of those options. We do have refinements, including to BRT station locations, most notably in the UW-Bothell Cascadia College areas. I mentioned the representative project assumes the existing transit center, but we've looked at a couple of other, several other locations for that transit center. We also have a couple of refinement options for parking locations. Again, the representative site is one of, a piece of property the city owns, Lot P South, but we're also looking at adding structured parking onto the existing surface lot at the Popkiny Stadium, the existing parking there, adding structured lot. And we have talked with the school district a little bit about that. And the third option that we've been looking at is to add structured parking on top of the existing Bothell Park and Ride Lot. One of the bigger considerations is, are the route options for service between downtown and UW-Bothell and Cascadia College. And I have a few graphics where I'll show you that, those options. Final analysis, again, it's upcoming. We are in the process of conducting that evaluation and reviewing it. So to, on those service options, the, so again, what's unique about Bothell is we have our two BRT lines are both coming to Bothell, and so making that connection is an important one. So I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of detail here, but this, we have three general concepts that we're looking at and evaluating. One is what we're calling a modified ST3 scenario. So this option for both the I-405 BRT project and the SR522 BRT project is very similar to the representative projects that were included in the ST3 plan, where these two projects meet up at the 195th interchange. What's a little, the reason we call it modified is because rather than having only every other bus meet up at the interchange, we would, we would get every SR522 bus to meet up at the interchange, and there are various ways that that could happen. It'd still assume every other bus then continues on to Woodinville. So very similar to the representative projects with that one differentiation there. So the next option that, that is the other concept that we're looking at for connecting these two BRT lines is what we call a south campus scenario. And this is an option where both of the BRT lines would meet up in the south campus area of the colleges. We have heard some concerns from the colleges, so we are very, very much aware of that. The 522 project would follow the representative alignment until it gets to, through downtown to 104th, at which point it would then turn south, travel past the existing Bothell Park and Ride Lot, serving the Bothell Park and Ride Lot with a station located in the vicinity, and then meet up at the south campus where the I-405 BRT would also meet up at that south campus, getting off at the SR522 off-ramps there. And then a third scenario that we're looking at was called the Bothell Park and Ride scenario. For the SR522 BRT project, this is, this is still quite similar to the representative project that was included in the ST3 plan. The, for the I-405 BRT project, this is quite different from what's included in the ST3 plan. So under this scenario, the I-405 BRT project would get off the freeway and actually go into the Bothell Park and Ride and do a turnaround there to then, obviously would have a station there, and then go back, back to I-405. The 522 project would have a station located closer to the Bothell Park and Ride, and there would be a pedestrian connection between the two BRT lines through downtown Bothell. So, so these are the high-level, and we've had multiple combinations of all of these that we've been looking at for months, but these are kind of high-level, the kind of key scenarios that we're evaluating. So I know, this is, this has a lot of detail, and I won't go over all of this for you, but some of the, some of the next key steps, we are starting to enter a really critical period of the project now. There will be an elected leadership group summit on November 30th, which is actually a part of the I-405 BRT, already scheduled and planned elected leadership group meeting. And a portion of that meeting, we're thinking about 30 minutes, but we haven't quite set that exactly, a portion of it would actually be specifically focused on Bothell and these two lines connecting up. So that'll be an important meeting at the end of this month. And then, at the beginning of December, Sound Transit will be sending out to the inter-agency group, all of our partners at the cities, and WashDOT transit agencies, the colleges, our preliminary refined project. And we'll send that out, and then we'll follow it up with a meeting. We'll have multiple meetings for about the next month with elected leadership group, with the city managers group, with the inter-agency group, with the cities along the corridor. And so we'll continue to get feedback on that. And then about a month later, we'll, we'll be sending out another version of that, because we anticipate there will probably be some tweaks to that. Send out another version at the beginning of, so that's at the beginning of December, and then at the beginning of about January, then we would send out an updated version of that refined project, which would precede going out for our public meetings in January, additional inter-agency group meetings, city managers group meeting. And then the last real final thing before going to the board is January 28th, the week of, would be an elected leadership group meeting. And that's where we, the refined project would, we hope, be, you know, given a thumbs-up. So then, we would, we have a lot of processes from that point that take us through February to get us to Sound Transit Board in March. And we think the, based on the type of action and the, we think that we may be getting final action on that at our capital committee, because of the nature of the action, we may only need to go to capital committee, but we may still do something at the actual full board meeting, March 20th. We're not sure yet. We'll, we'll keep our inter-agency group representatives informed of exactly how that plays out. But that is our schedule for the 522 Northeast 145th BRT project, and I'm gonna turn it over to Paul for the I-405 update.
Awesome. So since we mostly want to talk about the 522 tonight, I just have a couple quick updates on the 405, and one of it is, start off the, the schedule is very similar to the 522 schedule that Kathy just went through. We have the same inter-agency groups set up, like the leadership group. We're probably a month ahead of the 522 at the 405. We'd like to take the project, move forward with to our board in February versus March. While 405 is a bigger project in dollars, it's actually a lot more prescriptive, and there aren't as many real finite details to work out, such as how we connect lines of Bothell, and what we do on 145th and Shore Lane. So it's a very similar schedule with all the elected leadership and staff involvement, but we're about a month ahead of the actual 522 to go to the board. Something I'd like to point out, I know last time I was here, I was here with Kim Henry, who's the executive director for the I-405 team. We still work very heavily with Kim's team, and you may have heard about what they call the North End Project, which is looking to get express toll lanes from 527 Canyon Park down to connect to where they have the two express lanes north of Totem Lake. So we worked with them on that. If we did that, we would look to move our Canyon Park BRT stop into the new direct-access ramp at 527, and also at 522. And I bring this up because Kathy went through some of the options that we're looking at in, I'd almost call this short-term, because at the same time, when we figure out how we want to select what the options Kathy went through, we're very cognizant of the ultimate 405 express, dual express toll lanes. So part of our math is, when are those gonna happen? And that's why we work with Kim and his team so much, because when we go to put, make these improvements that Kathy just took you through, are those gonna be interim, or are those gonna be around for like 10 years or even longer? So as we move forward and figure out what the long-term plan is for the 405 express toll lanes, then we discuss how much we put into the other improvements. We can put the bus BRT station at 195th. If in two years, we're gonna move it into the express toll lane, well, do we build the full-blown, throw all the, a full-blown station, or do something, something a little more temporary, so we're not just building this thing twice? We're trying to be cognizant of the money. So I just like to bring this up. We're working with the 405 team, and these other improvements, depending on the schedule of the 405 improvements, then we'll have a discussion about how interim they might be. Hopefully not. Hopefully, they build the express toll lanes by '24, we don't have to worry about it. But we are paying attention to that, to make sure that we're not putting a bunch of money in something that might only be there for a couple of years. We'll have to, you know, think about how those investments go with the timing of the bigger project, and that's something that we talk about quite a bit. We also are still looking to procure that property site up in Canyon Park Business Park for the bus, the bus space. We've talked about that a couple of times. The board has authorized us to move forward with purchasing that. We have not done that yet. We're in the process of acquiring it. We'd have a bus space up there, vehicle storage, employee parking, operation space, maintenance space. We're also taking a little look at it to see what are the actual number of buses that we, that we would end up wanting to put on that site. So we're going through this exercise right now. We'd like to have that recommendation on the site next spring, next first quarter when we go to the board. We are looking at some other sites, which we've always talked about. We just went to buy the sites as for sale. We have about 12 other sites we've been evaluating, and we evaluate them based on size, where they're at. We want them close to the 522 and 405 BRT. We like to start with them pretty flat. We want them vacant. We want the zoning to be compatible. We want a minimal amount of wetlands or environmental impacts that we'd have to address. So we have this list, and the bus space that we've been pursuing all along, still, still comes to the top of the list, but we actually will have the full list of everything we looked at, which we'll write up as part of this phase when we're complete. Here's everything we looked at, so we'll take that to the elected leadership group and others as well, the board. Here's, here's how we got here. I just wanted to let you know what's going on with that and what the, what the status is. And then there's a couple of other things I'd like to talk about. Wait, 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 sorry. Is we have two of the bigger projects for the 405 BRT that are coming sooner than the rest of the projects. And these are because they're capital improvements to rebuild a couple of freeway intersections, and these just simply just take a lot of time. And these are projects that will be built by the I-405 team, Kim Henry and his folks, with the funding either by Sound Transit or in partnership with Sound Transit. I like to bring this up to you because the big one, just to the south of Bothell, is in Kirkland. This is a rebuild of the Northeast 85th interchange, the B New Express toll lane ramps there, the BRT stop there. And we're looking to go to the board in December with the task order with WashDOT to take this concept that we have all the way through project development, and that'll take about 33 months, and get them to the point to actually put that project on the street to solicit a design builder. But this is a big, big part of the BRT program. It's gonna be going to the board in December. So I just wanted to let you guys know. If you were wondering what was going on, you see this on the board calendar, that's what that is. I wanted to make sure you're in the loop on that. And then the other big project is actually down in Renton. We're working with WashDOT, where we build, they're building express toll lanes from Bellevue all the way down to Renton, and right in the middle of that, Northeast 44th, is the interchange at Northeast 44th rebuild. We're gonna, they're gonna rebuild that, again, express toll lane ramps in and out. We'll have a BRT station there and some parking. And this is one where they are currently finishing their environmental process. They're looking to get that completed in the next month or so. And here's one where Sound Transit is a funding partner. We're sharing a certain portion of the cost of this, and we'll take that to the board, hopefully in January or February. It really depends on when they get their clearance. But that's an amount of over $100 million. So again, I like the, like, that's like the first really big ticket out of the box for the BRT program, so I want to put that on your radar, in case you're wondering what that was, that that's, that's the big item coming up. So I just want to give you an update on, we're at the 405, and particularly, you're gonna see some things on the board if you follow their calendars. We'll talk about this at the ELG on the 30th, but just to let you know that, that's kind of the schedule on with some of those big intersection projects. So, so if you see that and people ask you, yeah, I know, I know what that is. I'm familiar with that. So that was my short summary of the 405. We're at with the project itself and the staffs of the bus base. And Kathy and I, or Cameron, who snuck in here, would be glad to answer any questions. I also know that we were given 15 minutes, and we're running a little late, so I apologize for that.
Have we do have questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So when will you know about the bus barn location?
The plan is to have that back. We're looking to have another out beside the 30th ELG in November, probably one in January to go through. Here's all the project refinements. We're initially hoping to have that in December, but the more we kind of talk about the schedule, we're not sure that that's gonna happen. But there'll be an ELG, like the leadership group, after this one on the 30th to talk about all the proposed ST3 refinements to the 405 BRT, which would include a discussion of the bus space.
Because we have a bit of a concern, the site you're looking at in Canyon Park is in our regional growth center, and we came to you asking about the possibility of affordable housing or something to offset that issue, because we struggled to keep our regional growth center in the last round, and so we're really under the gun to have our numbers up. And now I've been hearing that maybe you're not so interested in helping us do that, and so I'd like to, to know if that's true or not, and where, where we might be with that.
That's a good question, and we talked about this, and we've talked about how much room might be available on the site for other, other development, and this sort of ties into what is Sound Transit's long-term need of that site with some other regional express buses or other things. So I guess that would be actually a great discussion that we'll keep going with the city. And we'd met with staff earlier, we talked about this, this exact, exact thing and what you need to do, your region goals, and we were like, well, let's sort of figure out what we can do, or at least help do some of the, the work to, you know, come up with the numbers and see just what, what the situation is. We've had the discussions a little bit with Mike and with some other staff, but we're aware of that as we move forward.
Okay, and the other concern that I have is, originally, we were thinking it was one set of buses, and now we're looking at two, and I'm just wondering with that, is there a potential for some, some sort of traffic mitigation up there?
Yeah, no matter what the number of buses would be, we're assuming we would do the, we'll do the full environmental analysis, which would include traffic, which would include noise and all that, all those things, and then we'll work with the city on what the required mitigation would be based on what these results were. But yeah, that, we would be including whatever we sell on for the number of coaches, employee vehicles, all that. That would go into the traffic studies that we'll do next year as part of the environmental process, and if there's mitigation that we need to do to meet level of service or what that may be, certainly, we would do that like any other of our developments, yeah.
Okay, and then one last question. That Kirkland interchange, what's the price tag for that?
You know, I was walking over here, and I said, I know I'm gonna be asked this. Why don't I have it? I think it was, I'm trying, what did I tell Kirkland? I think it was like $250-ish, and it's about the same budget that we, the same estimate that we had for the Sound Transit III project. And we are doing a three-day cost evaluation process, which is WashDOT's cost thing. It's a three-day workshop that we're gonna do next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, to A, refine those costs, to identify any risks, to identify opportunities, to make that more efficient. But yeah, that is a big, that is the big piece of the puzzle.
Is it $250-ish million? Or $2... I just want to make sure we have the correct number of zeros.
Actual, actual number, but I mean, it was...
But it's not, it's not outside the budget in ST3?
No, it actually comes in really close to what we had actually estimated for ST3. One thing that, I know, you can't really tell from that graphic I showed you, but it's, right now, that interchange is a full cloverleaf diamond interchange, and the proposal is to actually make it three layers, with the middle layer being the express toll lane ramps, and for the buses, and basically shrink it all up and get rid of all those loop ramps. And so we're looking at actually doing less, instead of widening all those loop ramps out, it's actually just getting rid of them and doing the work in the middle. So that's why sometimes it's a little hard to get your head around what this... why sometimes it's a little hard to get your head around what this cost is. And that's basically the, the nuts and bolts of that project. And that's why we're also doing this three-day workshop with subject matter experts from WashDOT and Sound Transit to really, really hone this down and to see where we're at. Cause when we move forward, you know, we want to know what that is, because that is the lion's share of the 405 BRT.
So I take it since it's close to on budget, the finicular's out?
We need to figure out how to get folks from the park and ride up to Northeast 85th. There was a, there is a standalone project to put bus lanes on 85th from 6th to 120th, where half of that is already covered by this project. And so the real question is, what's the best way to get folks up to the park and ride? What makes the most sense? And we're working with Kirkland staff heavily on that, what like, what seems like the most logical way to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. It was a lot of good information.
You bet.
So I just have a couple of questions. The, the parking garage on P South, that wasn't clear that it's, sounded like it's kind of gone through some iterations of things. Are we, or are we not looking at likely having ST3 fund a parking structure in downtown Bothell?
We're looking, well, I can, we're, we're looking at, we still have, I think, three primary sites on our, our books. One is P3, one is a site further north of that over by the stadium, and then on the existing park and ride itself. So, so we have, we're trying to get down to one. And those are kind of like the three bubbling towards the top right now. And we'll have to make that decision as what makes the most.
So one, one of those will become a parking garage though, with ST3 funding?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. The other question was, so the, the bus barn, for lack of better terms, in the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, the original acreage that you were authorized by Sound Transit Board to, to pursue was, I think, one bake alone, or was it just, did they give us how many acres that they said to pursue, or was it a specific lot?
It was, it was one specific lot that we're pursuing, and it's roughly 12 acres.
And have you guys considered expanding on that? Cause it sounds like you, plans have changed a little bit on the scale of the, the bus barn in Canyon Park?
What we're trying to do is, is if we need to put additional buses up there to keep them on that site. We're doing some workshops. How do we, how do we make that site work, work better? Cause we're, we're trying not to, not to go out and acquire more property.
That'd be appreciated, because like the deputy mayor said, and it's our regional growth center and we've got it per capita.
We're trying to get it on the site that we have.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Anybody else? No? Oh, there, sorry. Councilman Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So my, I have several questions, but I'm going to keep it short for the sake of time. And I can bring these up in the elected leadership group meetings for 522 and the 405 on the 30th. But I echo the same concern about the regional growth area and the partnership with affordable housing and the opportunities we have up there. That is our regional growth area and affordable housing is something that this council has said is important to them. And I want to make sure that we don't lose that opportunity. I think I've heard numbers anywhere from 1,000 to 1,800 units could be afforded on that, that property that I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So that, that's a pretty significant number of units, and especially when we have to meet the, the Growth Management Act and, and ensure that we have those units available. So that, that is a big concern. I will bring that up at the, at the next meeting. I've also heard mention at the last Seashore meeting of some informational projects that are potentially not going to be going forward on the 522 corridor. They might not be funded or they're changing or something like that. There's some, some, some items that are coming up on that. So I want to make sure that we're talking about that often and frequently with the different cities.
Sure. I, I can answer that right now. Our plan is to, is to fully implement all the 522 BRT elements. At the last couple of meetings, we've talked about the challenges of the 522. We have a pitch point in Lake Forest Park and how we're going to get the Bat Lane through there. We have an existing bridge. And there's a lot to, to be worked out on 145th and Shoreline, cause it's a tight corridor in there and, and some various competing needs for the use of that right of way. But we haven't taken any of the 522 elements off the table. We've just identified, these are the kind of sticky points. And we wanted to give folks a heads up that these are the, these are the key things that we're really focusing on as we move forward to, to address those.
Okay. And then the park and ride, the siding of the park and ride in Bothell, I think that that's going to be a major pinpoint for, for me in making sure that we're siding that park and ride so that it has the best economic development area for, for the city of Bothell, since we're, you know, it could be used for economic development, it could be used for park, it could be used for several things. So want to make sure that we're taking a holistic look at that and then tying the 405 to 522 together properly. So those, those are going to be big, big issues. And then the last thing I'd say about the, getting back to the bus barn is when we take a look at traffic impact, amount of buses driving around, the amount of traffic at certain lights, things like that, that's not the only impact that it has on the city. And I've learned throughout these meetings that I've been going through for transportation, that other impacts that we don't often look at are the impacts on road maintenance and things that cities burden for, you know, roads that have to be, you know, overlaid and things like that. So I want to make sure that, you know, we're taking a look at those impacts beyond just the traffic intersections, et cetera, et cetera, and looking at the long, long-term impacts that we're going to have on, on the city as well. So, thank you.
Well, Councilmember Orange.
You've given us a lot to digest. And for those who've been at the table, they have less ketchup than I do. I can see a lot of thought went in here. Some of the things that you were talking about on projects that were happening down south, I thought, like one, the 85th interchange, is that two exits down from the last, from the, right up around Totem Lake?
Yeah.
Where there's, and so I started to put my self pity hat on and I thought, you know, Bothell's starting to feel like, you know, the stepchild here for projects that are happening. And yet I realize that you're putting a lot of thought into Bothell. So I would like to echo comments about road tear, road wear and tear around Canyon Park area, areas that you're going through downtown. I like, I know 522 is well-equipped to handle load of buses. And you're also talking about a park and ride down the road there. So those are things that interest me of, of what's happening to our streets, both on wear and tear and people trying to navigate during their normal course of things, either as a pedestrian or in their car. How, how is this bus traffic? Cause it's, it's frequent, right?
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, there's going to be some nice buses going through.
Absolutely.
So is, is it going to assist Bothell in the way it's living, or is it going to complicate? And I trust you are putting all those pieces together and thinking about them thoughtfully.
Yeah. And we're doing a lot of that work with Bothell staff as well, working with them and what the impacts would be, you know, what, what it means having these additional buses on the road or these additional cars coming to, to and from a parking structure, wherever that is. So that's a, another opportunity for the partnership between our staff and your, and your staff to, how does, how's this going to work?
Right. And, and I also would like to echo the concern about a maintenance yard because, you know, we want your buses running.
Yep.
However, Canyon Park is flanked by some pretty steep slopes and some wetlands. And so if, if 12 acres is taken up by a maintenance yard, what, where are we going to put our affordable housing from there? So if you have other options?
Okay.
We're grateful for that.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving on to the council committees, city manager reports. City manager, how you doing? Okay, good. Any committee reports from council? No, no, no. Okay. You guys have one down there or you moving on?
I think we have a little statement here.
Okay.
My colleague to my left has laryngitis, so I am reading.
Is that contagious?
Only if you're sitting to her right. This is Virginia Ash. Welcome to the city. I look forward to your playing a major role in the revitalization of downtown Bothell, the CP master plan and throughout the city of Bothell, and facilitate the private purchase of the city-owned property consistent with the community's vision. In your words, you describe the combination of small businesses, high-tech companies, and higher education as an economic development dream with a strong team. It takes a team of enterprising individuals to bring this to the table. And we welcome you to the city and we look forward to working with you.
All right. Moving on to the visitor comment period. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And I have some sign-up sheets. First one is Greg Smith.
Good evening. I'm Greg Smith. I live in Bothell. I'm speaking to you tonight to invite you to attend a city's climate action summit being held November 17th, 10:00 AM until noon at the Kirkland UU Church. The topic of the summit is the 2014 K4C agreement between King County and 12 of its cities to reduce their greenhouse gases by 25% by 2020, 50% by 2030, and 80% by 2050. Since then, four more cities have joined, but none of them are on track to meet their objectives. The summit is hosted by several eastside climate-focused citizen groups, including the Green Sanctuary team at my church where the summit is being held. Claudia Balducci, King County's K4C coordinator, will be there. So the summit will be an opportunity to learn more about the agreement. I also have an outline agenda of the summit, which I will share with you. But item eight pretty well sums it all up. That is, the summit will suggest ways for residents of the cities to make a difference. Of course, one of those ways would be to join People for Climate Action, whose mission is to help local government achieve their greenhouse gas targets. I'll just finish by saying that you can RSVP to attend this summit at peopleforclimateaction.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Glairam.
Good evening, city council, and thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes here tonight. I'm here as a member of the Bothell Library Advisory Board, affectionately known as BLAB, its acronym. So once again, I get to make my little pun. I'm blabbing about BLAB. But tonight I want to talk to you about a program that is really remarkable that we are hosting at the library on November 29th. That's a Thursday after Thanksgiving. It is actually being sponsored by a group that you may very well know, which is the Muslim Community Neighborhood Association. They are making a presentation that, this is a series, by the way, there's four pieces of it. The name of the series is Meet Your Muslim Neighbor. So they're hosting topics each time that we have these meetings. And then conversation ensues. And I will say, I went to the one in October and it was about Islamic culture and art. There was a very interesting presentation and then a most civil, engaged, and interesting dialogue conversation that followed. So our next one is on the Thursday after Thanksgiving, but the topic for that one is Islamophobia. And because we're a city that's proud of our diverse and gentle way we are with neighbors, what a better thing for the city council to know about and talk about than this wonderful meeting that is hosted by King County Library System and sponsored by the Muslim Neighborhood Community Association to have Bothelites come out together to the downtown library, the King County Library System, and hear a presentation and also have an opportunity to engage with neighbors about things that matter so that we continue to have a reputation as being a city whose neighbors live well together. We're not known for anything horrible, you know, horrible and horrifying. So then I'm going to take off my BLAB hat for just a minute because I did watch all 12 hours of your, your conversations and your exploration of the biennial budget. And, and I will say to the mayor and the deputy mayor, city council and city manager and all the city staff, I was so impressed. I really just was going to sort of take a peek at what you were doing. I ended up, I couldn't tear myself away and for over three days. And yes, I got to eat my dinner. I get to do my nails. I could even do a little knitting. I am so in awe of how focused you were. What a wonderful background and presentation. The city did a great job in explaining. The manager was fabulous in terms of answering questions. And your questions were so thoughtful and good. And it made me very, very happy. I know we're in a financial issue with the city, but with you guys in charge, I feel incredibly confident and I'm very grateful. Thank you. And I'm going to leave these.
Thank you. Next is Ginger Warren.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ginger Warren and I'm a Bothell resident of eight years and I have three kids and live in the Maywood Hills area right above downtown here. I know, I, I'm so glad I got to follow you saying that our council does a really great job because I, I do have the pleasure of saying good things about Bothell and how Bothell council cares about things. Just as you guys are going into budget talking and I'm just here to plug for the Bothelscape Park that I know everyone is dying to talk about and make sure it's happening. I just wanted to make sure that it was mentioned and that there is still a large portion of the community that really would like to see that happen. And as we are making all these improvements on our roads and our traffic, just remembering that a small piece of community is still very important. And I think for our young people especially, they'd really appreciate having a skate park. And that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is Ruth Thomas.
Hi, my name's Ruth Thomas and I'm Ginger's neighbor. And who are you? This is Edison. We also wanted to voice our support of open spaces and community parks. We live walking distance from Bothell Landing Park and we'd also love to see a skate park in the area. I'm almost 40 and a registered nurse, so I don't think I'll be using it, but I know someone in my house would love to. And just in the talks about increasing the density of downtown, I just think it's really important for kids to have good, healthy outdoor play areas and stay out of trouble. There's been some talk about the location. And I think the downtown area, the open lot is a good location because it's visible. It's not hidden away in some more residential area. So I like, I'd like to see it in an open area like that. So thanks for considering that.
All right. Thank you. That's the last sign-up sheet I have. Does anybody else want to provide public comment? Going once, twice? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. There's nothing but move, removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, plus, please vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson, absent and excused. Now we're into the public hearing, AB 18-166, Public Hearing Ordinance, Establishing New User Rates For The Utility Services, Water, Sanitary Sewer, and Stormwater Services. So I'm officially opening the public hearing. And we have Mr. Boyd Benson. No, that is not Mr. Boyd Benson.
Very good.
Public works director.
Good evening. Just wanted to throw you a quick curve ball. My name is Erin Lenhart. Good evening, council. I am actually going to introduce Mr. Benson. Boyd joined us fairly recently. He is our new-ish utility and development services manager. So he will present to you. I just wanted to very quickly offer the reminder that when I presented the public works budget to you a few weeks ago, that it also included the utilities. So some of what you So some of what you hear this evening may sound a little familiar. And also to let you know that the rates are in support of that budget that we've proposed to you. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Benson.
Good evening, mayor and council. Boyd Benson, Public Works. And with us tonight is Tagi Aker.
I'm Tagi Aker. I'm a project manager at FCS Group.
Thank you so, so much. FCS Group has in the past supported the city with their financial reviews and rate studies, so we had Tagi come in tonight, just in case there are some questions that you have later on to address those more in more depth. So a quick overview, our water sewer and stormwater utilities. These are fee-supported proprietary utilities. They're standalone utilities. Revenues can only be spent on utility-related expenses, so the revenue we earn for these utilities are spent on those utilities. With that said, wow, look at that. These utilities are subject to utility tax, and that, those revenues go into the general fund. So you'll see that revenue, the general fund. And Tagi's going to talk a bit more about these type of funds.
So what we're going to be discussing here tonight are the three utilities, the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. And as Boyd mentioned, those are proprietary funds, or more specifically, enterprise funds. And what that means is, you know, those are charges for goods and services. So for example, water utility rates would be set aside for water activities to cover water operating and capital expenditures. And in general, they're meant to be self-sufficient funds and not subsidized, for example, by the general fund.
And we base these, these rate analyses on long-term operational and financial sustainability. So when we say long-term, someone may think of two years for the budget. We look more at the seven, or even the 20-year approach, to understand what projects need to be constructed to support these utilities. And the council has a prerogative to adjust these rates based on recommendations, and that's in Bothell Municipal Code, and that's what we're talking to you tonight about. So the general approach, we are attempting to balance the long-term revenue and expense for these utilities to make sure they are viable, so we can complete day-to-day operations to keep the services running, to keep the machine running, as has been said, and also to provide for system improvements, both to take care of our existing infrastructure, to replace our aging infrastructure, but also to make sure that we have the system-wide improvements in place to accommodate future growth. Some of the revenue we see are the user fees. Those are the rates that are charged for residential, commercial usage. The connection fees, those are system charges that are applied against new development to make sure that new development pays their fair share for our systems. And then grants and bonds. Expenses, personnel maintenance and operation, day-to-day activities, wholesale rates. We pay a charge to King County Metro to dispose of our sewage. We purchase our water from Seattle Public Utilities. Capital projects, like I mentioned, for both existing infrastructure that may need to be replaced or upgraded, and also for system improvements. And then inter-fund charges. The utilities pay their fair share of fleet, insurance, legal, other items. And then the utility tax we discussed that goes to the general fund. And in the middle, and I'm going to ask Tagi to talk about this a bit, are the restricted funds. These are the things that you see in your budgets and that are there every year.
So in some of the future slides, we're going to be looking at a fund balance, and when we're looking at that, not all of that is unrestricted, or in other words, not all of that fund balance is available to pay for operating and or capital costs. There are restricted reserves associated with working capital or capital reserves in terms of, in case there's cost overruns and capital projects for those sorts of things. And any debt that the city may have for any of the capital projects and the utilities might have a restricted element to that. And so not all of the fund balance that you may see can be available for use right away. So something to keep in mind, there are restrictions on a portion of the fund balances in some of those utility funds.
Those are also set by council policy and municipal code. So one is the operational reserve. So we have 30 to 60 days of funds set aside, so we can operate if we run out of revenue. So the proposed recommended rate increases are 3% across the board for water sewer and stormwater. And once again, that's to promote fiscal, long-term sustainability of these utilities. And we'll be going through each one of these different utilities in depth. So the basis of this evaluation, the real basis of our utilities is found in our comp plans and our system plans, comprehensive plans and our system plan. So you recently saw before you the updated wastewater plan that has capital projects and infrastructure improvements to make sure our wastewater sewer system is long-term viable and resilient. Our water system plan, that's a little older. We have recommended an update of that in the 2019 budget, and I believe that's still included in the budget. The stormwater master plan, that's more recent. You'll see that come back before you again in the not-too-distant future to address some newer regulations with respect to water quality. And then rate evaluations, and Tagi might speak about this a bit, but we've done some in the past.
So a year or two ago, our firm worked with city staff closely to look at the rates in place at that time, and as Boyd has mentioned, really try to look, take a long-term look at the revenue sufficiency of each of the utilities. And so what we have done is a long-term forecast of expenditures and compare that against existing revenues. And that'll tell you if existing revenues are sufficient to cover those operating and capital costs, and if there's any sort of shortfall, we looked at what rate increases might be necessary at that time. What we're talking about here today is more of an interim update in between a bigger rate study effort, as Boyd mentioned, perhaps in a couple of years from now.
And then, once again, is the capital facilities plan, which discusses the projects we need to be looking at. All these influence the budget with both revenue and expenditure on these very large portions of the city's resources and requirements. I think it's close to $19 million in revenue that come into these funds, and we have to manage those appropriately, those funds appropriately. The long-term projections, like I mentioned, it's not just two years, it's more on the order of seven years. And then one other thing we look at, because it's interesting, what are other cities doing with respect to their rates?
So for each of these water sewer and stormwater utilities, we looked at a handful of neighboring jurisdictions and said, you know, for the typical single-family customer, single-family residential customer, what would they be paying in each of these cities and/or water and sewer districts? And while that, as Boyd said, that is interesting to look at, and I would caution that it can lead to an apples-to-oranges comparison. There are a number of factors that could cause one city's rates to be higher or lower than their neighbor's population size, the makeup of the different types of customers. If it's a largely residential city or service area, or one that mixes in a larger commercial or industrial base, that can create some differences there. And for example, topography can come into play here. So if there's a hilly city or relatively flat city, there are some costs associated with moving water or sewage from one place to another. So really, I wanted to keep in mind, when we look at these rate comparisons, it can be interesting to know how Bothell compares to its neighbors, but it's not the end-all or be-all. And one of the other important factors in looking at those is, these different areas, cities, or water and sewer districts may be in different investment cycles in terms of capital investment. So one city may have just completed a significant water treatment plant, for example, or some other significant capital projects, where a different city may be just beginning that cycle. So it's important to keep that in mind in terms of where the city of Bothell is and where its neighbors are in terms of how it's been investing in to capital projects in the past five or 10 years.
So the evaluation team, I'm going to burn through these a little more quickly. Public Works Engineering and Operating Staff, we need to understand both the long-term planning with respect to engineering and then day-to-day operations. Finance, financial staff, and executive leadership, and then of course, FCS Group. Once again, the 2019-2020 budget, we'll look at wholesale costs, staffing overhead, our financial plans for capital improvements, and then our revenue, anticipated growth, user rates, and facility charge. Those all kind of wrap together with respect to the funds. And it's, it's a little bit dynamic. We have to understand what's coming in before we understand what's going out, and we have to understand the revenues we need before we can make sure we can get the projects completed. Fund categories, we discussed revenue and expense. Tagi discussed a bit about the unrestricted beginning fund balance, and that's the available cash to do day-to-day operations and capital projects. And do you want to run through this one?
Sure. So for each of these utilities we'll be covering today, we'll be looking at the different revenues from both user fees and connection charges from new development, and then we'll also be looking at how those revenues are used in each of those individual utilities. So here's an example from one of those utilities, that a couple of years ago, say in 2012, 2013, unrestricted cash balance was relatively low, and over the past few years, that has accumulated over time into about, right here, $4 million. And as you'll see in the projection here, in the next couple of years, that's projected to be drawn down as those cash reserves are used for capital projects with cash on hand. And so this kind of ties in with, you'll see in, you know, 2018, for example, a total beginning fund balance of about $5.1 million, but after you've set aside your appropriate amounts in the different operating capital and debt-related reserves, only about $4.1 million of that is then available for capital projects in this particular example.
And just a quick note, when we talk about capital project funding, there's a proportion that comes out of our user rates to make sure that we can replace our existing infrastructure, and there's the portion that comes out of facility charges to expand our system so we can accommodate future growth. So we've just discussed that a bit. The water utility, safe, reliable, peeling water. We need to make sure, we're mandated to provide sufficient quantity and pressures. Our service area is the majority of the portion of the city within King County. To the north, we have Alderwood and wastewater, and water and wastewater district, and then North Shore Utility and Woodinville to the southwest and the east. Day-to-day operation of 117 miles of water main, three reservoirs, four pump stations, and over 1,000 fire hydrants. It's quite a bit of work. It's valve exercising, it's making sure things run, it's making sure we have the residual chlorine in our system, and we're doing the appropriate monitoring to make, to ensure the quality of our water. Rate considerations for 2019, SPU is increasing the charge of our water. We'll be paying 5.5% more in 2019. And then the cost of living increase, which is closely related to our day-to-day operations for, for staff, is going up 3%, 0.6%. The recommended consumer rate increase is only 3. And you might ask, well, the increases for purchase and cost of living are quite high when you compare it to the consumer rate increase. But once again, we look at this over a long span. The water purchase increase isn't in perpetuity. It happens, and then it goes back down, and it doesn't increase. So we're pretty confident about this 3% increase.
Sure. So what we have here is the water utility preliminary, 2019 to 2020 budget, and I think you'll notice right away on the left, revenues at about $11.9 million compared to expenses about $13.3 million. So and off to the right, that projects slice of the pie graph, that 26% or so, some of that is going to be funded from those reserves, as we had mentioned, with that cash on hand. The majority of your revenues come from user fees, so it's residential and commercial customers paying a fixed base rate, as well as paying for a certain amount of water that they use each billing cycle. And then, in addition to that, some facility charges, that does come from new development and growth. And then off to the right are what those resources are used on during this two-year budget period. Water purchase, as Boyd mentioned, going up roughly 5%. It makes up a significant portion of your water utility costs. In addition to that, there are salary and benefits, people working out in the field, maintaining and inspecting the system, and they also need the support of supplies and services and those types of things. And then there's, for example, the state taxes that are owed on revenues received by the utility. This just gives you a look at what's coming in the door and what's going out the door in terms of revenue and expenses.
So just a brief overview of upcoming water utility projects, close to $3.4 million in the next biennium. Quite a bit of work for water main revitalization. That's either replacement of water main or upsizing a water main. And the Morningside Water System, that's the, a portion of our city that may or may not, could, could benefit from some increased flow and pressure. And then the Bloomberg Reservoir. And the photos below are just, these are day-to-day activities. The, that's a, the image on the left is someone installing a fence post. This is what you see in an older asbestos cement water main, and this is the type of repair. And on the right is our annual water meter replacement, to make sure that our meters are functioning well and collecting the correct information. Water utility history, we've discussed our long-term approach to projections, so you'll see some arrows pop up. The first one is the total revenues. We track that based on anticipated development activity within the city. Total expenses, once again, based, at least for water, on what we have to pay to receive our water from SPU. Our capital expenses, those are the projects that we choose to complete. And then the purple is the unrestricted beginning fund balance. And what you'll notice here is, as you go out toward 2025, it drops down pretty low. And we've been asked about that, and the answer is, this is based on completing quite a few. It's a very robust capital project approach. Do we anticipate that we'll go that low in 2025? The answer is no. Once we look at utility rates and our capital projects with the water system plan update, we think we'll be okay. But right now, we're really focusing on the 2019-20, but we want to keep in mind future potential issues. Rate comparison, once again, this is based on just an average consumption across different cities. That's the only way you can compare. Right now, we're at...
Sure. So city of Bothell, right now, for the average single-family residential customer is paying about $42 per month for water service. And with that 3% rate increase, that would bump that bill up to about $43.42 above Redmond and Alderwood, but still below many of these other jurisdictions in the survey group, including Kirkland, Woodinville, and Bellevue. And then in particular, the Redmond Ridge, Novelty Hill customers. You know, as I'd mentioned in the beginning, one of the differentiating factors of different cities is the topography, and you can see one of the differences in Redmond, for example. The typical resident is 3791, they're at the bottom, but those customers on top of that ridge and Novelty Hill are paying a surcharge because it's more costly to serve them. So it's just an example of, even in a given area, different groups of customers may be paying different rates, but generally Bothell's just below the middle of the survey group for the water utility rate comparison.
And you might notice that we did get as much information about 2019 rates from other cities. It's not available this time, just because they're going through the same process we are, is looking at the rates. So what's shown there is a mixture of 2018 and 2019 rates. Once again, 3% increase, that's across the board for residential, commercial. It's mostly based on increase in supply costs and cost of living, and we plan to update our water system plan in the near future to make sure we have a good understanding for future projects. And this is what we have, recommended increase of 3%, which is about $1.26 a month. Sewer, safe, reliable collection and pumping when needed, and conveyance to ultimate treatment at King County. It's the King County portion of the city. The majority, most know which county is by Alderwood Water and Wastewater. Day-to-day operations, 70 miles of sewer for lift station or pump stations to actually get that sewage up, and so it can gravity feed to our collection, conveyance mains that go to King County Metro. Some considerations for 2019, King County is also increasing their rates for sewage treatment by 2.5%, the cost of living, living increase of 3.6, and a recommended consumer rate increase of 3%. This is very similar to the previous slide. Sewer treatment is almost half of what we, our expenses. And once again, as Tagi mentioned, our expenses outweigh our revenue. That's because we have a pretty robust beginning fund, unrestricted beginning fund balance. We've been saving up our cash, so we can do projects. Some utility projects coming up in the next two years, citywide sewer main replacement. A lot of that, some of that will be by installing cure-in-place pipe. A lot of that, some of that will be by installing cure-in-place pipe. Where instead of digging up the roadway and putting a new sewer main, we can actually install a liner and increase conveyance and take care of older damaged pipe. And you can see an image on your left, that's an older concrete pipe. It's non-gasketed, it's crushed. And then the, another project is lift station number one, Valhalla, which is kind of hard to see. There's a, it used to be a green circle on the PowerPoint, just south of the river. Oh, yellow. Once again, we're looking at long-term trends, total revenues in green, total expenses in red. Quite a bit of work in the capital side. You can see the yellow line dropping quite a bit 2019, 2020, because of the, the work we're doing in revitalizing our sewer mains.
So for the sewer utility rate comparison, you can see Bothell right now, for the average single-family residential customers, paying about $73 per month. Roughly 44 of that is for King County. They, they turn around and charge the city for residential equivalent. And so much of that is, is out of the control of the city itself. But with that 3% rate increase on the city portion, that would increase the Bothell 2019 bill to about $75 per month. So that puts the city at just above the middle of the comparison group there.
Once again, a recommended 3% increase for residential and commercial. That'll help support our significant capital program. One of the goals, we understand from councils, to make sure that we're doing asset replacement, to make sure that we're taking care of business as it comes up, so that we're not burdened by excess repairs in the future. Increase in wholesale treatment costs and increase in self-insurance. And that was discussed previously, but each utility pays a portion into the self-insurance fund, and the wastewater utility is paying much more in the next biennium. So in summary, a typical single-family rate would go from 73 per month to 7519 per month. And you can see the associated increases in King County treatment also, for an increase of 219 a month. Our stormwater utility, this is largely driven by regulatory requirements with respect to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, our NPDS Phase II permit. You'll see some increased regulations with a new permit when that comes out next year. A lot of that is with respect to inspection and maintenance, and there's some public education, the rest. Our service area for storm is the entire city limits. Day-to-day operations of quite a bit of infrastructure, just shy of 78, or 8,000 catch basins, and quite a few water quality and detention facilities. We do not pay for discharge of stormwater. We just are responsible to make sure that it's detained and released at the appropriate rates and to ensure water quality per the design of the facility as, at the time it was constructed. So the majority of our increase here is with respect to projects and cost of living increases. And once again, 3%. So similarly to the other funds, we'll see that our expenses are greater than our revenues for the 2019, 2020. And that means we're, we are using, utilizing some of that unrestricted beginning fund balance cash to get our projects done. The majority of our expenses are capital projects and salary, and the majority of our revenue is from user fees and grants, facility charges, and the rest. Some stormwater utility projects you'll see coming in the next two years, downtown revitalization. That means improving our existing stormwater facilities within the downtown core. Citywide pipe and facility revitalization, some of that is facilities, a lot of that is the conveyance system. And culverts, creeks, and sediment. Quite often now, if we have a culvert that we have to improve that crosses a roadway, sometimes those are covered under regulations that mean we have to upsize a culvert and make sure they're fish-passable, or address other environmental issues. And some of the projects you see, you'll, you'll see the annual catch basing cleaning on the left. And then on the right, one of our requirements for NPDS Phase II compliance is public education outreach. So that's, that's a rain garden education class, which is kind of neat to see. Once again, revenue and expenses, very similar to the other funds. You'll see that we have accrued quite a bit of cash on the unrestricted beginning fund balance at this time, and we'll be expending quite a bit of that. But this one is, it kind of rebounds down and back up by 2025.
So for the, the average single-family customer in Bothell, they're paying about $14 equivalent per month right now. For the water and sewer utilities, the city does do the, the billing themselves, but for the stormwater utility, it's billed through King and Snohomish Counties on the property tax statement and the once or twice-a-year tax statements. So this is just converted into a monthly equivalent, so we can compare that with the water and sewer utilities. But with that 3% increase, Bothell's monthly equivalent rate would go up to $14.56 for a single-family parcel. That's below Woodinville, Redmond, Kirkland, or the unincorporated King County rate, or the Bellevue rate, up there at about $25 per month. But Bothell is just above the Alderwood rate there, which would be the City of Lynnwood at about $12.74 per month.
And there is an error on that. The 1456 should read Bothell 2019. Apologize about that on the bar chart. Once again, 3% rate increase for all classes, and this will help offset our significant capital program and PDS permit requirements. The rate would go from 1414 a month to 1456 a month for a 42 cent increase per month. This slide summarizes what we've discussed to date. There are only two more slides yet. Thank you for your patience, but I'll get you one.
Yeah, so just to combine all of the rate comparison charts that we looked at before, Bothell is above the middle in some, below the middle in others. And when you put them all together, compared to these other local jurisdictions, the 2018 combined rate is about $129 per month. That would increase to about $133 per month in 2019, with a 3% across-the-board increase to all of those utility rates. So kind of right in the middle there.
And in summary, staff recommend the following rate increases. We've tabulated the cost for a single-family residence. If council chooses to enact these rates, you'll see this commence January 1st on our every-other-month billing from the city and as part of the tax statements that come out semiannually. That's what we have for you this evening.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. The, we have zero signed, signed up for the public hearing. Does anybody want to give a public comment? It's fascinating. Okay. With that, is there any council questions? We were laughing about the 3%. Sorry. Okay, is there any questions? No questions? See, you guys nailed it.
This is a really exciting subject.
It is.
It's got to be one question.
It is. No, I think you convinced them all of that. Oh, there we go, Councilmember Zorn.
Just clarifying, because there's a lot of good information here and very helpful. And it seems the way you've approached this whole thing has been very thoughtful and measured. So I very much appreciate it. But I want to make sure that I understood you, understood you right. Our surface, the, our stormwater fees are cover the, is for the entire city? And is that because it's rolled up into our, our property tax, or?
It, it's covered in the entire city because that's, that's, that's how our service area boundary is defined by the NPDES permit.
Okay.
And that's why you don't see it on your monthly statement. It's not something that Alderwood Water District would, would take care of.
Okay.
It's a city utility.
City, city utility as part of that permit.
And that's why it's split at the county line for King County tax.
It's all put into one. Okay, thank you.
I know it's a public hearing, but just anecdotally, somebody was interviewed with you that I know, and they were very impressed with you, and they were glad that you actually got the job instead of them. Not that they didn't want to come here, but they thought you were really, really, I'm talking to you, Boyd. I just wanted to let you know that, and so.
Why, thank you.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Appreciate being here.
Yep. All right. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move we adopt the proposed ordinances establishing new user rates for utility services and clarifying billing process for sanitary sewer.
Second. It's moved and seconded to adopt, I'm sorry, moved by the, by Councilmember Agnew to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing new user rates for utility services, all three, and clarifying billing processes for sanitary sewer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to turn myself off instead of on. I just wanted to say, I appreciate your explanation of why we're only doing 3% versus the actual increase. It makes a lot of sense to me. I also appreciate you explaining that we'll be, even though we'll be taking in less, we're taking from reserves to do projects. So that is very helpful. So, thank you so much.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? See none? Place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson, absolutely excused. And now, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now we are into it. We're going to use the telephonic system. You got it going over there? Okay, good. So this is new business, AB 18-167, review and discussion of legislative agendas and of organizations of which the city is a member, Eastside Transportation Partnership and Sound Cities Association. And we have the Assistant City Manager, there you are. Welcome. Do you have Liam on the telephonic communication? Oh, here we go.
Hello?
Hi, Liam. This is Laura Hathaway at City of Bothell. Can you hear me?
Hey, Laura. Yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
Councilmember Olson, you are live, so keep that in mind. You're being echoed on TV and in the chambers. And we have the Assistant City Manager to give a presentation on AB 18-167, which is the review and discussion of legislative agendas for Sound Cities Association and Eastside Transportation Partnership.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. This item is a little bit different. We've talked a lot this year about your legislative priorities and policy manual. You will be reviewing those documents after discussions in April, September, and October. You will see drafts of your own legislative agenda and policy manual next meeting. So you'll see those shortly. This item's a little bit different. This is actually a platform for council discussion of two other organizations' legislative agendas. And so, because the council appoints its members to serve as city representatives on committees, this is an opportunity to bring those documents back and have the entire council weigh in and provide some feedback and voting direction to your representatives on those committees. So this was a request to bring these two forward as an opportunity for the council to weigh in on some of the proposed legislative priorities in there. So tonight, for your discussion, we have the Eastside Transportation Partnership and the Public Issues Committee, I believe I have that right, of the Sound Cities Association. So those are included in your packet for discussion. And just to clarify, this is meant, again, to be a, a voting direction to your members on this committee. This is not requesting council direction to staff or requesting council endorsement or approval necessarily. It is meant to be a platform for discussion. As well, I wanted to just call out specifically, as we did in the staff report, and also for the listening public, there is one particular item in the Eastside Transportation Partnership agenda where it says the following, accelerate funding for the I-405 master plan. And the specific phrasing is, either through direct state funding or bonding against current tolling revenue, fully fund the remaining improvements in the I-405 master plan, with special emphasis on North End and South End express toll lanes. So this item was called out specifically because the mention of tolling revenue is connected to an item that will be presented next week at your own legislative agenda, where the city is proposing to ask, as its transportation priority, for support for WashDOT's request for completion of the I-405 master plan. This particular item, and in, in that discussion of tolling, may open up revenue options for that. So that is the item for council discussion, as to how the council members feel about that in particular. Staff has suggested that removing the word "current" might provide more flexibility. And then, I think that's it. So it's connected to an item you'll see next week. That particular wording change may provide more flexibility if you were in support of that. And then the deputy mayor has been leading the 405 stakeholders group, in addition to serving on Eastside Transportation Partnership. So my introductory remarks are concluded with that.
All right, thank you. The deputy mayor wanted to follow you up.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to bring to council's attention how important this issue is for the stakeholder group. So we received funding for the design of the 405 improvements between 522 and 527 last year in, in that legislative session. Councilmember, or Representative Kloba introduced that in the transportation committee. And so this year, we are hoping to move forward with right-of-way dollars and construction funding. Given that the tolls are not going away, from what we can tell, there were bills last year that didn't even make it out of committee. I would speak in support of the bonding of tolls for the express purpose of paying for our section of 405 between 522 and 527 to be funded with the bonding of tolls. We've already been paying for it for three years. The only way I see of us getting that, the construction funding is, is the bonding of tolls. And so I wanted to speak in support of that. It would be very helpful for the stakeholder group when we go to advocate and write letters to the legislature if we could support that. Our last attempt and letter did, did get us the design dollars. We have quite an active group that includes Juno, Fuji Sanasai, AT&amp;T, the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Snohomish County Council, Woodinville. There are probably about 25 signatories on that letter. And so I'd like to be able to go to them the next time we meet and have us all speak in support. I know Bellevue and Kirkland have already, I guess their council, councils have already expressed support for the bonding of tolls. So that's what I wanted everyone on council to know, what's the plan moving forward. Hopefully you'll support it.
So do we know the specifics on the SCA legislative agenda? Do we have concerns about that? Or is that, we're just having them both on here because they both have legislative agendas, or?
Yeah, these were the two legislative agendas brought forward for council discussion. There are other groups that also have them, but these were the two brought to staff for the council to weigh in on.
Obviously, the tolling or bonding of tolls is the one for ETP that we're focusing on. Is there anything in SCA that we should be focusing in on? Okay.
I didn't see anything.
Okay. Who would like to weigh in on the two legislative agendas? Anybody? Councilmember Zorn?
Took a lot of notes and prayed that I could crystallize them. And so I'm playing catch-up with a lot of good homework that's gone on. Are we also going, are we also discussing this, the five-year action plan on affordable housing? That's coming, is that coming up in our discussion?
I think we're, we're discussing a direction to the committee members for ETP and the Sound Cities Association. If you have issue with the other parts of the legislative agenda, that'd be good to bring up now. But just the legislative agenda section of SCA's, Sound Cities Association's agenda?
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, if it was part of the legislative agenda. Okay, so I'll set that aside. Okay. So the bonding, Mike, the question that I have about the bonding is, is there a fixed year on that bonding? Like, is it a 20-year bond, or what is it?
We don't have answers to any of those things. That's, that's out of the city's hands, that, that's not even being discussed at this point.
Okay.
This is, this is one of the steps towards moving, towards looking for funding for, for the 405. So those are all questions that need to be...
That we don't have the answers for.
Nope.
Because my concern is, is, you know, we, we need to fix 405, but once we bond, we're locked into tolls. And I sit there and I think, how much do we want to saddle our future selves and our children with indebtedness? Because the dollar only goes so far. So I have real concerns. I would ask some really hard questions about what is, what are the terms on that bonding? If we, so, as a, it, it all... locked into tolls. And I sit there and I think, how much do we want to saddle our future selves and our children with indebtedness? Because the dollar only goes so far. So I have real concerns. I would ask some really hard questions about what is, what are the terms on that bonding? If we, so, it all has a cumulative effect. This is just one, one piece of the indebtedness for the taxpayer. And we need to really measure whether or not that's a burden that we want to place on ourselves and our kids down the road. We need squidging room. I mean, we're housed in a building that's taken away our option to buy Shelton View Forest. So every time we agree to locking ourselves into a debt, we take away future options. And so, when we talk about bonding, my request is, be really hard-nosed about it, because it's a, it's a big, it's a big commitment that, that we're putting our people to. So, that's, that's my comment about bonding, is with fear and trepidation, approach it.
And are you okay with the SCA legislative agenda, then?
That doesn't include the affordable housing component?
Well, it just says, try to address...
Because I'm looking at the SCA draft 2019, it also has affordable housing on that.
It does, yeah.
Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, for the people who are part of that, I would, there's a couple of things that came out. One, I love the fact that the 80% AMI is part of that. And I would ask that maybe we consider bumping that up to 100% AMI? Because if we look at the bonding, the tolling, and if the gas tax passes, cost of living for people is going to go up. Affordability for housing is going to be tougher. So, I love the 80% AMI. If there is an inclination to bump that up to 100% AMI, I think that would be a wise move. I would also like to see, when we talk about affordable housing, a nod to supporting, supporting, not providing, but supporting mechanisms that have mental health and substance abuse, piggybacked into areas for housing, because that's often a component for, in affordable housing, when you look at people who have, the closer and closer we get to homelessness in affordable housing, right? When somebody can, just barely has pennies to squeak together to, when we're looking at, you know, 10% AMI, very often there is a, mental health issues, substance abuse tied into it. So I would love to see a nod to supporting that as a group. I love pushing the multifamily tax exemption, pushing that. And then I also, on one of the goals, I think it was goal number six, was promoting, that speaks to gentrification. And I know that south of us, there is real concern of gentrification. And it's not, I don't want to approach this as keeping people of color and culture segregated, but I really think that part of protecting personhood of people is by honoring existing communities. And so the item that talks about protecting the housing for parts of King County, that speak to gentrification, I would, I would appreciate that voice being made. So, and that's my, the sum total, is that the sum total of my comments? That's the sum total of my comments.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Olson, are you ready to go out there on the phone?
Yes. So I'd say that I'm for supporting the legislative agenda of the SCA and the ETP, specifically with the ETP focusing on completing the 405. And as a mechanism of that, bonding and focusing the tolls for that express purpose, I think we're paying for this, for the tolls, and if we can have benefits caded in our communities, I think that's equitable benefit of having those tolls, so we might as well get some benefit, some good out of it.
Okay, thank you. How about on this side? Councilmember Agnew?
Legislative agenda, I'm in favor of supporting the Sound Cities, as far as ETP goes. You know, they've been talking about bonding and using the tolls to promote 405 south. It's all 405 south. I'd surely like to see something that says, finish 405 north, since we've been paying for it for a number of years. I truly would like to see something, but I don't, you know? And, and, and a few years ago, they got up and told us that. They said, you know, we asked them specifically, how are we going to pay for 405 south? And they said, well, we're going to pay for it with the tolling. We said, well, we're the only ones tolling in the North End. How are you going to do it? And they said, well, we'll bond for it. Well, they're still walking down that path. I'd just like to see something that says, why don't you finish one before you start the other?
And SCA, you good there?
SCA.
You good there? Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe? You're not speaking. She's passing. Councilmember McNeil?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right, so, on the ETP, there's three funding mechanisms that were mentioned in that legislative priorities, Public Works Trust Fund, sales fuel taxes, road usage charge studies. And maybe we should, maybe step back, Mayor, I would like to see, I know the deputy mayor myself, if we're going to go back and report on this, we should probably know where we kind of stand on all of these individually? Maybe?
So you want us to do another round on the funding mechanisms?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I think it might be easier for us if we know maybe where we stand collectively on these individually. Funding mechanisms, corridor infrastructure, accelerate funding for the I-405 master plan, and just kind of go through them real quick, because I think that, for me personally, all I took out of, the council members that already spoke, was, you know, ETP 405 completion. I got a consensus that we're supportive of that. I've got a, I'm like 50/50 on the bonding of the tolls, but making sure they go to the North End as well. I heard mention of making sure that, let's see, ETP 405 completion, and then I have the SCA, affordable housing, making sure that the tax exemptions, and then possibly going from the AMI from 80% to 100%. So I kind of took some notes, but I think if, kind of, I can take the notes on each one of these, then it might make it a little easier for me to, deputy mayor myself, to...
Okay, so you want to do, so the corridors and infrastructure, you want us to weigh in on each of those three, or the funding mechanisms above?
I think I just take all the bullet points and just...
Yeah, the, okay. So where do you stand on them?
Me personally, if we're going down the list, the Public Works Trust Fund, need more information on that one. State fuel sales tax, I'm supportive of that. Road usage charge study, I'm supportive of that road usage study. Accelerate the funding for the I-405 master plan, supportive of that. I-90, the second bullet point, and other regional corridors, supportive of that. Fund roadways owned and managed by local jurisdictions, I'm supportive of that. Bicycle pedestrian infrastructures and policies, supportive. Regional transit, supportive. Technology advances, supportive.
And so I think we're, I would assume, I mean, going down the line here, we all pretty much, it sounds like we're, Councilmember McNeil, you're supportive of all these bullets. Is anybody not supportive of these bullets? No, you're looking good. Good over here. Yep.
And then SCA as well.
That's unanimous. And then, and then SCA, everybody's okay with all the bullets in SCA? Yes, nods. Councilmember McAuliffe, are you okay with the SCA legislative agenda?
I am, but I also support, sorry, making sure that we put in funding on 405 master plan as Councilman Agnew said, with more emphasis on the North.
Yep. I haven't weighed in on that yet either, so I've been interested in weighing in too. So I agree with all these bullets, but the bullet that says bonding against current tolling revenue only, it doesn't say only, but it's kind of being specific there, I'd push back on that a little bit. They're going to bond it, bond it, not just, you know, what they have as of today, or whatever date they pass the legislature's decision if they are going to bond it. From my understanding, they have a cash flow, though, so maybe they don't necessarily need to bond it, but doing something in North 405, if they don't do something in North 405 with the toll revenues, it's going to be a disgrace, in my opinion. I mean, we have been paying that for three years, and we've gotten horrible traffic from it, and very little relief from having toll lanes from 527 all the way up to I-5.
We got a shoulder.
Oh, that's right, they painted a stripe on the shoulder. Okay, so, I think we're all set, then? Do you need to talk again?
Well, I would just say, remember when we were talking about pushing the North over the South, that we're, this is a group of cities that go up the entire corridor. So unless we want to cause some sort of war in ETP, I don't think any, that will be supported with pushing the North over the South, because it's all Eastside cities. So that's, that's my concern. I think they're trying to be equitable. And I, as far as I understand from WashDOT, a small portion of that South section is being paid for with the tolls, but once the tolls are in place on the South, it will be paying for the North, for whatever that's worth. And the, the other piece of that plan is to also make 405 and 167 all one corridor, so the tolls from 167 would also be bonded and used on the North End projects, and whatever projects going forward, so.
Councilwoman Agnew?
Yeah, but just remember that a majority of the cities are in the North. I mean, we're talking about Renton and Taquilla in the South.
And Bellevue.
And, well, Bellevue, but Bellevue's covered in the North because of, in, about midway through. You know, so, you know, it's, it's kind of hard, because I kind of feel like they've taken advantage of us over the years, and we're not getting a whole lot in return. And they keep playing that game that this is for all of 405. Well, yes and no. I mean, we're going to have to spend a lot of money on 405, because we have to add lanes to it before we can even toll it. So, I mean, it, I just feel like we're not being heard, and it doesn't matter. And that's insulting.
All right, anybody else want to go a second round? Are we good? You guys have your direction? You're good? All right? We're good. Moving on. Thank you, Councilmember Olson, for calling in.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions, AB 18-168, resolution adopting City of Bothell Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan. And we have Rita, is it who? Who? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. My name is Rita Hu, Senior Capital Project Engineer with Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the final draft of the ADA Transition Plan. This is also an update of the previous staff briefing on July 3, 2018. As the previous briefing staff talked about the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, the city's responsibility in terms of the Title II of the ADA requirements, the self-evaluation of curbrants and sidewalks the city has performed, as well as the development of Bosso's draft ADA Transition Plan. Since then, the city held a 45-day public comment period in order to solicit public comments for the draft ADA Transition Plan. At the same period of time, staff reached out to the local advocacy groups, such as Disability Rights Washington, Hearing Loss Association of America, Washington State, Northwest ADA Center, Self Advocates in Leadership, Spinal Coral Injury Association of Washington, Washington State Independent Living Council's List of Independent Living Centers, Snohomish County Health and Public Safety, Seattle and King County Health and Public Safety, as well as Noshaw School District. Altogether, the city has received three public comments and was able to provide common responses in a timely manner. City staff also incorporate the comment and common responses into the final draft of the ADA Transition Plan. Bosso's final draft of ADA Transition Plan has the following six key elements. First, destination of an ADA coordinator. Bosso's safety manager, Kathy Thieland, is also Bosso's designated ADA coordinator. She will be responsible for coordinating all the city's efforts to be in compliance with the ADA requirements. Second, grievance procedure. It's Bosso system, including a schedule for resolving any ADA-related complaints in a prompt and fair manner. Third, public notice under the ADA. City has issued a public notice and is posted on the city's website. The public notice says that City of Bosso does not discriminate against any individual with disability in services, programs, or activities. Fourth, self-evaluation of curbrants and sidewalks. Today, city has reviewed over 1,000 curbrants and more than 100 miles of existing and missing sidewalk segments. Other than the newly built curbrants, most of the review curbrants are not meeting the current ADA standards, because they were built to the standard that preceded the ADA requirements. Similarly, most of the review sidewalk segments are not meeting the current ADA standards. Approximately 8% of existing sidewalks in the public railway has significant drop of overheating and cracking condition due to the growth of the tree roots or material deterioration. Fifth, project prioritization. Bosso's Public Works Department recognized there are so many non-compliant ADA facilities to be corrected, but the available funding is very limited. Therefore, a prioritization, a ranking system was developed to prioritize the ADA deficiency. The current ranking score system is a combination of the attribute score and proximity score. Attribute score accounts for the ADA criteria. The proximity score accounts for the street classification, collision data, and the proximity to the school, public services, including public transit, as well as low-income residents. Six, a nine-year implementation plan. So Bosso's transition plan also include an implementation plans, which will address some of the curbrants and sidewalk deficiency in the public railways. Those deficiency will identify through the self-evaluation process. It is projected that over 200 existing curbrants will be reconstructed, more than 100 new rims will be installed, around 3.4 miles of non-compliant sidewalk will be repaired, as well as three miles of new sidewalk will be constructed. Total estimate for this nine-year implementation plan is 16 and a half million in current year dollars. This amount is expected to come from various funding sources, such as sidewalk program, annual overlay program, safe street levy, and some projected capital project, including sidewalk grants. In conclusions, Bosso has completed its first ADA Transition Plan. The ADA Transition Plan has been revealed by public. The ADA Transition Plan does not cover all aspect of self-evaluation or implementation of Bosso's programs, policies, or facilities. However, it does address the Title II of the ADA requirements, such as destination of an ADA coordinator, grievance procedure, public notice, preliminary implementation plan. The ADA Transition Plan provides guidelines for the city to address ADA non-compliant issues and help the city assure compliance with all federal, state, and local governments. The ADA Transition Plan is a must-have living document, and city plans updating its ADA Transition Plan every two years. The resolution to adopt this ADA Transition Plan aligns with 2017 and 2018 council goals of community connection and public safety structure. Therefore, staff here would like to request council to adopt this ADA Transition Plan. Thank you. I'm happy to answer the question you might have.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions, staff? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Can I ask?
Yep.
How many person hours did it take to prepare this document?
Wow, we started since year 2016, and of course, we were not full-time doing this ADA Transition Plan, but I must say, it has been, we have been spending a lot of time and effort preparing this transition plan.
I can tell, it's, it's pretty, it's thick. I tried to read the whole thing, I have to admit, I skimmed. What struck me was there 33 miles of missing sidewalk. How much does a mile of sidewalk cost? I got linear feet, but I'm too lazy to do the math, so I'm hoping that you know.
So $600, $680 per linear foot, so times 500, 5,280.
Wait, I gotta get my calculator. Six?
3 million.
3 million?
Yes.
Times 33, right? So it'd be 99 million.
Correct. Yes, to construct all the missing sidewalks we have identified today.
And, and why do we, why did we do this plan? Why did we need to do this plan?
Because this is required by the Title II of the ADA, so it was enacted by the federal, so it is a federal requirement. So we saw an ADA Transition Plan, basically, city is going to violating with the Title II of the ADA requirement, and also, it is very unlikely city is not, is not going to get any federal or state fund.
That was my next question. So would you call this an unfunded mandate? I'm trying to make the point, when, when people talk about how government costs so much money, and, and, you know, recently with the budget talks, I got a lot of comments, oh, just cut, just cut things. This is one of those things that we don't get a choice, and we have to do it, correct?
Yes.
And if we don't do it, what happens?
So there will be no funding available for the future improvement.
And are we more or less likely to be sued with the plan or without the plan?
That, that's very correct, so very likely, I see the potential litigations is out there for not making the petition facility accessible to the individual with disability.
And I'm not saying that it's not important work, I'm just trying to make a point, when people talk about wasteful government, this is an unfunded mandate that took two years to do, we had no choice, and it takes a lot of staff time.
Sure.
I appreciate all your hard work, I think it's really important work. I was really impressed by all those maps of each curb and what they need to, you know, what needs to change about the slope and all that. And I have a new respect for how much there is with sidewalks and curbs to maintain. So once we put it in, that's not the end.
No.
I mean, we heard from a gentleman, I don't know, was it last week, about all of the sidewalks in Amber Ridge, that the tree roots are growing in and breaking up the sidewalk.
Yes.
So it's not over, just because you put a sidewalk in.
That's very correct, it's an ongoing process.
I appreciate all your hard work, and I'm really especially grateful that the citizens voted for the safe streets and sidewalks levy, otherwise, we wouldn't be doing much of anything to improve our sidewalks, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ernest?
Quick comment. I'd like to echo the appreciation for the comprehensive work that went into this, and also echo safe streets and sidewalks as being part of the groups of funding that you put together. Was it like three major groups that you put together for funding for this? It was not a small thing.
No.
So I appreciate that. And then I also, coming from my special ed background, emphasis in hearing loss, a lot of people don't appreciate what, how significant hearing loss can be. When I saw your sampling of your advisory group, and how broad that was, I don't know who, who or how you chose that, but it was very well done, so I also appreciate that. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, does anybody else want to add a couple of questions? Okay. So you said 60 million over nine years? Something like that?
Correct.
That's our target? So how, was this in the proposed budget that came to council for the first two years, 2019, 2020?
Okay, so I have a breakdown here. So $430,000 a year being set aside for the sidewalk construction, curb rent construction, and reconstruction, and so that's from the sidewalk program for nine years, 3.87 million. And this 430,000 is a capital funds and is contingent upon council's approval every two years. Annual overlay programs, I see we have 3 million budget, and $400,000 out of the 3 million per year will be utilized toward the ADA reconstruction, so for nine years, 3.7 million. Safe street, safe street levy, $480,000 per year for nine years. The $480,000 will be spent on sidewalk construction, crosswalk installation, and sidewalk repair. And the other 4.73 million is cap, is projected capital project, as well as sidewalk-related grants.
So the overlay stuff, so can you give me an example of an ADA overlay project? I'm just, I get the other one, sidewalks and ramps, that's no big deal, but overlays are usually the actual roadbed?
Correct.
So is there, is that where we put like, can you give me an example of an ADA feature that we'd pay with that money in an overlay project?
Yeah, current, so normally when we overlay a street, and we will have to reconstruct, if the ADA ramps are not ADA compliant, we will have to reconstruct the ramps. So typically, we will hire consultant to, before the overlay projects, we will have consultant to design the curb rents along the corridors.
Okay, so it's curb ramps, but it's associated with an overlay project?
Correct.
Okay. And then one other thing, because cities just do the similar, so I think there's grant funding for curb ramps somewhere, or maybe that was a couple of cycles ago, but hopefully that comes back maybe, because this is obviously an expense all cities are incurring, and getting funding for it would be good. The other thing that came to our attention is that the typical bane grate, storm grates, those are not ADA compliant in sidewalks, crosswalks? And so the real bummer is the ADA-approved ones actually clog with leaves super easily. And you could only imagine when you need to move a storm drain from its current location, because pipes come into it underground, it's not just moving banelit, it's the pipe configuration. I just kind of want to throw that out there, I didn't see that in the plan, and that could have some major financial consequences to, to the city. When we start getting into like, making the ramps accessible, and then they get out into the actual crosswalk in a wheelchair, and it gets stuck in bane grates.
That's a very good point. We can definitely take that into consideration in our future updates. So our plan is to update the ADA Transition Plan every two years.
Okay. All right, that's all any questions I had? Anybody else have any questions? Then good, we need a motion, don't we? He needs us to approve this.
I move we adopt via resolution the City of Bothell's Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan.
Second? It's moved by the deputy mayor, second by councilwoman Agnew, to adopt via resolution the City of Bothell's Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with councilmember Olson, absent excuse. I think that is the, except for the city attorney. Yep, that's it. Okay, so we're going to go into executive session for 10 minutes pursuant to RCW 4230 110-1I. City attorney, do we anticipate coming back to the dais? So the council will be adjourned after executive session.